I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Nelson?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Sullivan?
Saxon.
Walden?
Here.
Workman?
Here.
Alright, next just need a motion to approve the minutes of the December 3rd, 2023 council meeting. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Alrighty, up next we have a motion to approve the payment of bills as they appear on the warrant sheets.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Workman?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Alright, up next, public comments on agenda items. Now we'll talk to the Wallaces about garbage. Joyce got anything there? Uh, next we got communications from the mayor. Janet and I are still working with FEMA. We hope to get everything wrapped up by the end of this month. Oh, well, actually by the end of next week is what we're hoping for, uh, to get everything done. Some things we're not gonna be able to get reimbursed because our insurance reimbursed us. We got a check for twenty-six thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and six cents for trees and for the generator. So we're pretty happy about that. Now with FEMA, we can claim, you know, we've ended up spending about twenty-nine thousand. We have not fully gotten the bill from Coleman's yet. I spoke to him, uh, the week, uh, the December twentieth. Uh, he's supposed to bring it in when he got everything done, so it must not be done yet. So anyway, we've gotten that money back. We can claim from FEMA, our deductible is of course some, uh, overtime hours and, uh, equipment hours as well. And they also mentioned fringe benefits, but I didn't say too much on what that is or how much we would get. Uh, also, uh, yesterday I signed the paperwork for the closing for the Bax Meyer subdivision. So now we officially own it and, uh, we're ready to do some work on it. And there will be a pre-construction meeting. Uh, you guys are all more than welcome to come. Uh, it will be at, uh, at City Hall at ten AM on, uh, the eighth of January. So if you, I may not be able to make it. I know Janet will be there, Joyce will be there, John will be there, probably Dana will be there. But it'll be, uh, talking with the contractors and what we're gonna be doing, so it's on me.
Ten o'clock on the eighth.
Ten o'clock on the eighth. The other year retired Selena. And, uh, so anyway, you know, starting off the new year, I mean, talking to, to Brian, we didn't really have any issues over the course of the holiday weekend or anything. And, uh, even with Dana, you know, we didn't have any breaking of the lines or anything if we did last year, but it was still cold. So appreciate all of them. And we got the new, uh, digital speed limit sign posted. So, uh, you know, if you go flying over the tracks, we're gonna, we won't know it to you, but we'll know somebody did it. So we got that going and that's really about all that I've got. So turn it over to the city attorney.
Well, the big thing I had, you've already filled the ledger, we have the property purchase, uh, yesterday. Um, I do still need to, and I to do this includes both the water plant property and the ordinance for the infrastructure loan. So that'll be hopefully before you next month.
Uh, one thing on the infrastructure loan, I talked to Mike about it, we're not signing documents for the bank. Uh, he mentioned, uh, they should have an answer because he's gonna go in with Taylorville, uh, First National Bank. And, uh, their board has a board meeting on the eighteenth. And so their board is going to be taking a look at the bank side, uh, so they have an answer shortly thereafter. So he thought it should not be a problem to pull everything in. Alright, go ahead. Alright, uh, treasurer, you got anything? Alright, Oliver first please.
I do have a question.
Okay.
The house on Illinois, is that all taken care of?
Hopefully tomorrow. Yes, we, we are done. I, I had told the attorney, I want this worked up ASAP, I'm done dealing with it.
That's all I'm sure.
Yeah. Is it all yours?
Yeah, to ask about it because I keep seeing it on the attorney bills.
Yeah.
No, we're silver rounding around the surface, but I, I think they've gotten it to where we can actually get it done tomorrow.
Yes, so signed the documents. There's, some of it was just a misunderstanding on their part. They really should have gotten an attorney because they kept questioning stuff after we were doing it. And it's like, no, they weren't understanding things and we had to explain it to them. So everything, documents, everything, I'm gonna sign tonight and then they should be in tomorrow to take out everything from there. Uh, we did get the house, well, the city, but the, the Adcox got that house tore down there off of Leafland. So it looks pretty nice over there.
So will we be owning this, the house on Illinois Street?
No, the, well, it isn't, alright.
And what are their plans for it, do you know?
The agreement calls for them to kind of remove the demolished by July, I believe.
July.
City clerk, you got anything? Alrighty, there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and move to, uh, Ron Blenker for update on the projects.
Okay, so, um, the water main project, uh, the, all of the work over at, uh, the section by the church on Samuel, uh, near La Rochelle, um, and at the west edge of town, that water main is all complete and all those services have been completed. And, uh, the plumbing crew left before Christmas and, uh, unfortunately they got pulled off to another project. Um, and we, we don't expect them back until the end of January, beginning of February. The sewer project, uh, they are on La Rochelle, um, heading south from Third Street, I think. And of course they left, uh, just before Christmas, uh, and we expect them back on Monday. So the sewer job will be starting back up next week, but we'll have a few weeks of downtime on the water main and lead service line project. The water treatment plant, uh, you may recall last, last meeting, we had to pass, uh, a revised, uh, ordinance for the borrowing authority, which, uh, then you have to publish it and wait thirty days to get a, uh, make sure you don't get a referendum request, um, which that thirty day period should be ending here soon. And I guess the last piece of the puzzle, um, is, uh, the property purchase, I think I heard.
Yeah, we're working on getting that wrapped up.
So, uh, I, I guess the, there'd be a decision. Do you wanna try to advertise it for bid before you finalize the property purchase? Or play it on, play it safe and get that whole ducks in a row before?
How much longer do you think? Are you thinking this month?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, okay.
So it sounds like you're closed.
Yeah. I brought it up when I was at Spurling yesterday and she's like, yeah, we're, you're kind of right. I think we're just kind of waiting on some documents, that's it.
Okay. Alright.
I think we've already received some money already, I was talking to Angel in regards to the water treatment plants.
Okay. Good.
Not the full three million.
Far from that.
Yeah.
But we did receive some dollars.
And then, uh, so then you've got agenda items here. Uh, there, there is a loan, uh, disbursement, uh, you know, a pay request for, uh, the sewer project, which the net, uh, loan disbursement request is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred sixty-three point ninety-seven.
Yeah, well, uh, we'll get to that. I mean, are you ready? Are you done with your reports or you still?
Yes.
Uh, next, this is what Ron had mentioned, we have the sewer main phase two project total disbursement number ten. And it'll be for a hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. You have a motion to approve that, please.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ready, next we have the sanitary sewer phase two pay request for Petersburg Plumbing for the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Thank you, any, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Okay, this one we're actually, we had to amend it, um, because the amount that we got is, was not right. So it is for the water main project total disbursement number three, it's actually fifty-four thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-one cents. Not a hundred and nine thousand seven forty-one twenty-three. I'll just need a, okay, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Reed?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Alrighty, next we have the water main project pay request for Petersburg Plumbing for forty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty dollars and sixty-one cents.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Alright, thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Walden?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Alright, next we have a change order for a, uh, two-inch service connection on St. Peter Street addition. Uh, it's for eight thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-seven cents.
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Alrighty, next, we just need a motion to approve the following Chastain invoices. Invoice number forty-nine sewer separation phase two, twelve thousand one hundred five dollars and three cents. Invoice number seven six four four point oh one dash one eight. Water system improvements phase two, three thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Invoice number seven six four four point oh two dash one two, water system improvements led service, four thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty cents. And invoice number seven six four four dash four two, water improvements, the water plant addition, twenty thousand seven hundred thirty dollars and forty-four cents, for a total of forty thousand six hundred one dollars and ninety-two cents.
I'll make the motion.
Alright, do you have a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Workman? Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Alrighty, up next we have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four fireworks for nine thousand dollars. Um, we did include this amount in, actually I think we did ten thousand if I do remember correctly in the budget. This is before the fireworks in, uh, on July the fourth. So we just need to approve it now so that we can do the contract. Also, uh, Gary, I thought of you on this. Um, Janet had brought up, this company also does drones as well along with fireworks, twenty thousand dollars.
Is it really?
Yes. So, uh, I thought it'd be cheaper, but, uh, no.
It'd be cheaper, it'd be cheaper to buy the drones ourselves. I had no idea it was that much.
Yeah, twenty thousand dollars is what she said because I thought, well, if we could do that, but, uh... Yeah, I think we'll listen to the rumors. Well, you can try, let's see what the budget numbers are. We got a huge windfall. Or somebody to donate. Alright, we just, if, uh, just need a motion to approve the fireworks for this July twenty-twenty-four for nine thousand dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Alright, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Alrighty, up next, this is a, we have a motion to approve ordinance for the committee of the whole. This will be ordinance number eight eleven. As you well know, that we've done some, kind of some experimental work on, uh, having all of our committee meetings meet on one night. Um, the meetings will take place on the third Tuesday. Uh, they will take place at six o'clock at, uh, City Hall. Uh, if you also kind of go through there and just kind of kind of point out some things, uh, the mayor, city clerk, city treasurer shall attend all committee of the whole meetings and shall be compensated a hundred dollars per meeting. The city clerk shall keep records of all proceedings and shall prepare the minutes. And then a copy of the minutes will be available at the next committee meeting of the whole. Uh, also put in there, uh, the committee of the whole shall review the minutes and may amend the minutes and shall approve the minutes and shall vote on any financial bills that aren't timely in nature. So if we have some things, some bills that's due, uh, we don't need to wait till, you know, the, the first Wednesday of the month. We can get them approved and paid right this, so it'll make things a little bit easier for Janet. City council, the city council members and the, the city, uh, employees shall attend, should attend. We did, there was a word in there, shall, we took that part out. Uh, should attend each meeting of the committee whole and shall be compensated fifty dollars for each meeting. I put that in there and, uh, for, for various reasons here. One, currently how it's set up, it states aldermen shall, city employees shall receive the same amount of pay as an alderman when they attend meetings. So they're, they're getting paid twenty-five dollars since we're making it one, we're increasing it to fifty for you guys. I figure they should get at least fifty dollars. Sometimes we may have a meeting that would go, let's say, two hours, even if we were to pay them at an hourly rate. Some of them will be making more than fifty dollars. So I figure fifty dollars and then to give up an evening and sit and listen to, you know, if you've got police and they say police is going last as an example, they're gonna sit and listen to water, streets. Uh, finance will always be the last thing, but I just figure it's a good, good gesture. And, and two, they're gonna be, you know, some of these, some police meetings, street meetings, um, you know, they've gone pretty short because, you know, there's three members, now there's gonna be six members that's gonna be talking to everybody. So the meetings are gonna, those sections are gonna be a little bit longer. So that is, that's why I put that in there. Are you, Gary, Gary has an issue with this and I'll let him talk and...
Well, we talked about it in finance and at the time we, we miscalculated what this actually, it will end up adding nineteen hundred dollars to the payroll and the budget, um, to pay all the city employees basically double for the same number of meetings that they, you know, that they normally attend. And like we talked with, uh, you know, the time period stuff, if you start at six, you only have, the first three meetings would be the only one that employees would have to come to. We would always do water first because it's always gonna be the longest. And, you know, I don't, you don't necessarily have to have every city employee here at six o'clock for the whole thing. You know, they come six-thirty or whatever. But we did talk about it in finance, but the number of, the impact to the budget, you know, basically doubling the pay for the, the meetings would end up being nineteen hundred dollars.
I thought it was nine hundred.
Well, we only had, they only counted half the employees. So it's actually, it's not three.
Jack, Darren, Brian, Angel, Janet.
Well, no, no, Angel doesn't count, they're not part of the...
Oh, that's right. Okay, who, Jack, Darren, Brian, Dana.
Tony.
Tonya. Tonya.
And Jackson.
And Jackson. So we had only figured it off three. Some or another, we forgot police and we forgot...
What, your Tonya?
Tonya. So it ends up...
Well, I think everybody should be here at, at the same time.
That is, that is an issue, I'm afraid because as we say...
Just in case something goes short or something goes long, then we're gonna be waiting for the next person to come at six-thirty.
And it will still be an, a revolving meeting, we'll just have to be like, well, we're gonna have to be at ease until, you know, Brian comes or...
I mean, mine, I don't have an issue with what the amount is. I just, I just, I think it was one of those things that I think it was probably something that ironically, this was kind of the whole point of the committee and the whole was so that everybody would be present to discuss things. And then we ended up doing it sort of in finance only and we only had part of the information. So that was my only thing bringing that tonight was just, I think it should be discussed by everybody with the correct numbers, you know, before we play on the amended side.
So Candy, are you saying that you think everybody should be there the whole time or just everybody should start as, be there right since the meeting starts?
Well, I mean, I think everybody should be there at the start, but then I don't know how it's, I mean, we haven't ever done this before, so I'm not really sure how it's gonna play out.
You were gone when we did it, uh, because we have, we've done it twice. And it pretty well, the first time we set time...
We set, we had, well, because we didn't have a methods mechanism in place, so we had to do that. I mean, it worked out pretty good. The one thing I, I felt though, when we had a time, uh, things were rushed because there was like, you know, in your mind, you're thinking, okay, I only got fifteen minutes, I can get everything done. Granted, we didn't have a whole lot really to discuss at that point, but I think that once we moved, we just say, hey, everything begins at six o'clock and then we try to just go from this to more of an open, open meeting for everybody.
I feel I should be able to leave if they finish, you know, say Darren goes first and he gives, you know, moves through everything. He shouldn't have to stay another hour or two, so... But the, the goal is, was for all of us, the aldermen, to always be...
It's to understand what's going on.
So we stay the entire time and, because that's the goal. But the employees shouldn't have to, I mean, of course they're welcome, but they don't have to. I don't think they have to.
That was my question is if we're basically, if you're staying for one meeting, you know, we, we really didn't change anything other than just they all come one night. But yet we were adding a significant amount to the budget, you know, for a meeting that we're trying to improve things, make things more streamlined and ends up costing us more money.
Well, I think there's, I mean, we'll, we'll, you can get some numbers from finance. I mean, I, maybe there's some other, other areas we can cut at, um, but I, I think it's well worth it. I think it's well worth an extra, at least fifty dollars. I mean, I, there was a point, and I, I get it, of taking away my hundred dollars because I'm, I mean, all I can do is bring up items. But I understand, you know, if there's another mayor that came in, he, that person shall be entitled to that hundred dollars. So I get that, they, they were amending this ordinance, you know, so, um, but, um, and Janet, there's a lot more work for Janet. She's got to be doing these minutes now, you know, and it's the same with the, the treasurer too. And I mean, and even, like I, like I said with the employees...
It's a lot more work, but she's not having to come to the nearest meeting.
She doesn't have to come to the nearest meeting, no, but when you include everything else, but then also think of like, you know, Dana. Dana, you know, comes to, comes to water and then she's also coming to streets, you know, sitting there through streets. You know, one thing that maybe...
Well, not every time, I've only been to streets a couple times.
Okay, well, I mean, I just was, well, parks, we also mentioned about parks too.
But don't you kind of trade off if Jack?
If Darren needs me to come for something, then yeah, I'll come.
Right, that's what I thought.
But I mean, I'm thinking it's more, you know, you're more, getting more questions asked, you're gonna, you know, visit more. You know, we need to know, you know, see more of what they're doing. So that was just an extra situation, you know, an extra silver that I put in. I know, I, I did mention to Gary, if he does apply, if he can make a motion to amend that amount to, to what he feels, we can take a vote to amend it, it passes for longer, but if they also... What were you thinking, Gary? What were you thinking that was?
I was, well, we, I was just thinking, just leave, everybody else has stayed where they were and just leave everybody's pay for what they were for the meetings. I mean, that was my only thing, I just didn't, I don't know, I just, we didn't change anybody else's, but we doubled the, the budget impact for the city employees for, to come to the same meeting that they come to every month. Anyway, we just changed to two in one day. That was my only thing. And we, and like I said, we kind of discussed it in finance only, which is ironic because we were talking about the whole point of doing all this was so that one committee kind of wasn't making decisions on stuff.
That's true. But at the time, in order to create this, we had to talk about it, that's like at one point.
Yep. It's not a big, I just, I just thought, so something...
Talk about it, you just, you want to talk about it as a whole. Yeah.
I'm losing sleep over it, I don't...
You just want to get your two cents and that's fine.
I just thought it should be discussed.
Okay, any final? Are you putting a motion or anything on the table? If not, I want to go on with as's and you can vote, you guys can all vote how you will.
I'll make the motion, we'll do it that way, everybody gets a discussion on, we'll be done with it for the vote on the whole thing. So I'll make the motion to amend it, to leave it at twenty-five a minute.
Okay. So you're wanting to amend, just for the record, are you wanting to include city council members or just city employees?
Just the city.
Okay, so you just want to amend it to where city employees should attend each meeting of the committee of the whole and shall be compensated twenty-five dollars for each meeting?
Because the other ones, that is what it changed, so there's nothing modified.
Okay. Dude, is there a second on Gary's motion? Twice. Alright, I think it's done.
Cool.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Alright, uh, so his motion, uh, had failed to get a second, so therefore we're back to the original as it's been presented. So do we have a motion to approve ordinance number eight eleven?
Go ahead.
Did it say in here that, that there's a certain water, streets?
No, okay, so there's, there's how I'm gonna do it.
It's gonna be rotated.
Um, it, it could, so each of you will preside over it. Um, we're gonna go, I figured what I'll do is I go by seniority. So Selena will start this month and then it will go with, uh, Candy, Gary, Donnie, Travis and Ross. So every, and what the point is, is that everybody will get a chance to, to do it. We'll have a regular standard agenda, but if you want to call water first, you can, you can, if you want to call police first, you can. I mean, is that, is that maybe a, is that a logical way to do that? I mean, we, we'll put everything on there.
Yeah.
Uh, the thing of it is, is that it might get confusing. I mean, we can, I mean, if you want, if you want to put water first and then water, streets, police, parks, because we're gonna have to talk about some park issues too, because we got, that's, that park building.
Well, it just wasn't for sure, like if we had water always up at the top, then that's...
Well, I think, I think I was wrong.
Employees have to stay or...
Or they have to come, they know they've got that time.
Yeah, and then the, the ones at the bottom, if they're always at the bottom, then they would always have to stay the entire meeting.
Well, what's your, what's your opinion on, I mean, you're the one that's gonna have to, I mean, we hate to keep you here. We moved you to the front, you've asked to do that, but with this new committee stuff.
Right.
Um, and it's also gonna be a little bit busier when we have Mark here for the subdivision stuff. I mean, are you...
I mean, I don't have a preference.
Yeah, I, I don't either, so I was like, we can make it towards chairman's, you know, the presiding officers.
Well, is there any, will there be any reason why we would ever mix it up?
No, I mean, but we just need to have something lined up.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but I mean, it's just your cause, I mean, unless there's something like Jack or Darren has got a, um, or, you know, have a ball game that they gotta hit you, let's say, at seven or six-thirty, then you should be like, okay, we'll let you go first.
So wait a minute, maybe I'm confused here. So if we're all coming at six o'clock and we do water every month at six o'clock and then we do, let's say, streets next, is it always gonna be the same?
It's, it's gonna be started at six o'clock and then there'll just be an agenda that'll just say water issues.
So if it's always the same, then doesn't that mean that the people at the bottom will have to stay the longest all the time?
Probably, yeah.
Does that make sense?
That's why I, that's why I suggested that if you know police are always gonna go last, tell them not to come till six-thirty or six-forty-five.
Yeah, and you know, typically Brian doesn't sometimes come to even our, the council meeting till later because he knows. So, yeah, I think that they can just kind of, if Brian wants to, if we keep it like that, please do it hard.
It's not in here, right? So I mean, we can, we can play with the, whatever works out for everybody.
We just figure finance will be the, it will be the last thing that we discuss, you know, on, on things. But I do want to put, you know, parks on there, we gotta get some park stuff done.
Do we do, I was supposed to say, isn't parks, parks is just as needed, isn't it?
Well, it, it is, but we also, we need to get some stuff rolling, I feel, you know, I think it's, I hate to say, it's kind of seems like it's been neglected. Uh, just because, just because we talked about all these projects and then just to get, keep everybody updated.
Just out of curiosity, I didn't even think about that. How do we, if we need to add, say, parks or something, how, how do we add it if that's not a regular, like if the parks people don't have to come to every...
Well, really, you just be Dana.
How would, do we have to have some mechanism to...
No, we just keep it, we just keep it as a running, a standard line.
As in just...
Just, just as, so if we don't have anything to talk about parks, we just skip over it.
Okay, I don't know if we had to make...
No, no, um...
I just want to get a, a frame, is all I need down there, so...
Well, what's, what's also...
Well, what's, what's also, I guess, kind of getting off subject, what's going on there in the center? I mean, it's just been dull for a long time.
It's gotta be kind of updated.
Yeah.
After it was put together and then the heavy part of it, the hand washing station thing, we've been there. Um, there's a gap from that to that brick.
Uh-huh.
And that's gotta be filled in some way, that's why that dirt and flowers haven't been put in, we've gotta somehow. Pack something in around there so that water and everything doesn't get in there and.
And another thing, speaking of parks, we gotta spend some of that ARPA money this year. We got till the end of twenty-four, we appropriated eighteen thousand to them, so we're gonna have to get that since. Um, I don't know if police has still got some of their money, you know, off the top of your, I mean, we're, you can bring it up at the committee of the whole. I think streets might still have some.
Use some of theirs.
Yeah.
Streets has theirs, uh, water used a little bit of theirs, just recently, but I thought parks used theirs.
Did they use it all?
I'll have to look, I thought parks did when we were doing all of that new stuff.
What, the new equipment?
Some of, some of that.
So we got two rounds, let me see, appropriately, thirty-six thousand, eighteen thousand one, one year and eighteen thousand is the next.
I know the first round we have parks.
I thought we did, yeah, I thought we did too.
But the second round, I don't think we did.
Okay. And we'll kind of create a, we're kind of taking this off of Rochester, Rochester does this. You, I mean, you hear any slack on how they?
No.
We got, their clerk has been great to deal with and, uh. All right. Yeah, yeah, we're going. All right, up next, uh, so I just need a motion to approve ordinance number eight eleven.
I make the motion.
All right, uh, any discussion? Oh, I have a second.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
All right. This next one is actually gonna be real quick. Um, discussion in action is necessary for the Elleroy Park District renewal, we had a renewal. So we joined the Elleroy Park District Association, uh, it was for three hundred and some odd dollars. Um, so my personal opinion is I don't think we need to renew it, I don't think we need to, to. I mean, they sent us a bunch of information.
Yes.
But we never really got anything out of it this past year, so.
That's what that, the folder is?
Yeah, the folder, the folder is wanting us to renew.
Yes.
For next year, and I was kind of like, okay, it was, I was kind of hoping to get more information from them.
It seemed like all, the big cities outdoors all benefit.
All benefit from it, they all get the money. But it just seemed like for nothing, and I kind of was like, I was gonna bring up a finance, I totally forgot about it, so I thought, add it to the agenda. I'm the doc, really think we need to do it.
There you go, three hundred dollars.
There, 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 you've seen three hundred dollars.
Darren didn't wanna spend money, that's the shocking part that I agree with.
I know, it's gonna be crazy. Just beginning, Gary, it's a new frontier in twenty-four. You too, Donnie, I know how conservative you are too. All right, so we're not gonna do anything there? Okay, we had no bids for the nineteen ninety-nine dodge, um, fifteen hundred ram pickup. We're gonna go ahead and probably, uh, put it out for bid again, see if anybody buys. Up next, garbage. So, uh, we have not gotten a signed contract from Wal's disposal. Um, they kind of just wanted to kind of get accoladed with, uh, things that's going on and, um. Sitting after totes, I did give them, was able to give them a list, but it was, right, right there towards the end of December, unfortunately. It was able to get to, so I wanna kind of talk to you, see where you guys are, I know you spent a lot of money on totes. You kind of feel that maybe you was, uh, overpromised and we're just gonna kind of see what we can kind of rectify to make things right. I will also tell you, for the record, and I'll pass this around, we did give money to Advance. And, and when we started their contract for recycling, and so I'm gonna pass this around, I had, uh, Angel give it to me. There you go, so, and I'll, I'll tell you guys, so you can kind of give you a little bit of an understanding. So for the first year, we gave Advance eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty cents for recycling. The second year, we paid one thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars every three months. So I had, so about a little over three grand that we paid them the, uh. Second year, so that would be seventeen twenty-four, oh seven, times four. Wait, what'd you say, Gary?
About seventy-one hundred.
Yeah, I, I realized that after I opened them out. So it's six thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. So I guess you kind of tell us, you know, where you're at, so we can get this contract signed and everybody leaves here happy.
Well, where we're at.
Okay.
I started out at six hundred totes.
Uh-huh.
The number. Right now, we're setting at four hundred and fifty.
Wow.
That's a hundred and fifty totes off, at eighteen dollars a month, that's twenty-seven hundred dollars a month. That's thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars a year, that I'm not gonna have.
So, yeah. So we had a lot of, I mean, five hundred, so, now, Tonya mentioned to me it's five hundred and twenty-five customers. And I think that that was what was on the list, and you had, you had about four hundred and?
Four hundred and fifty right now, um, and I'm sure there's, there might be a few more people calling in.
Yeah.
You know, uh, well, I'm getting a lot of recycling requests.
Yeah.
Tote requests now, and not so many new people, um, maybe a second tote, wanting a second tote.
How many second, how many recycling totes have you had to get rid?
How many are left?
Oh, how many are left?
Yeah, how many recycling totes?
Totes, cause I thought we had like a hundred and twenty-five people.
Uh, no.
It's not that much.
Um.
Okay. So you had to purchase those too?
Yeah, I, yeah, I.
How many recycling totes did you purchase?
I purchased, uh, two, I, I purchased six hundred and thirty ninety-six gallon totes and two hundred recycling totes. And they're sixty-five gallon.
And how many recycling totes do you have left, or have you passed out?
Um, it would be better if I, I, if I went down there and counted how many I've got left and that, because I had two, I started out with two hundred. Uh, I've passed out maybe.
I think we have at least a hundred.
There might be a hundred.
Hundred, hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah.
And you purchased six hundred and thirty garbage totes?
Yeah.
And that was just for us.
That's just for you.
There could be some discrepancy because there are some people in town that still don't know what's going on with garbage.
Yeah, I know, they're wrong, there is, cause I still, I see it on Facebook, someone's like, oh, I need a tote. Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, there might be a few.
And don't have Facebook.
I thought we were blowing up a water list, though.
We, we were, but I think that water list, I didn't see the list that Tonya had, had given them, but there's some places that don't.
Do the internet, there's people that don't do Facebook, have no idea who to even contact to get something up.
Also, those water lists, she thought water lists, there's people in, kind of in a country.
There's only three.
Oh, I heard there were several.
No.
That, that's a.
What I'm seeing is that, you know, a month ago or a couple weeks ago, you know, when we were in a panic, when you said we only had, we only had three hundred and twenty-five meetings. And now it's up to four fifty, I'm thinking, just like what she's saying, is that there's people that still don't know what's happening. They're gonna know tomorrow when their garbage is not picked up.
They don't have water?
Well, actually, they, when their tote was taken on the end of December, that's when I got a lot of calls saying.
Okay.
I don't have a tote, uh.
And so that's why it increased to four fifty.
And the, and the way I did the totes was, since we didn't have a list with names and addresses. I just started going down the streets with the numbers on the houses and dropping totes off, we'd write them down. That way we could at least get a bill out to them and then get their name and address and everything when they sent, and with a questionnaire. Now, I know on Facebook, everybody's wanting to know, you know, who's gonna have a, a letter, well, it, the wind blew the totes all over town. It ain't gonna, they ain't gonna hold the letter after, you know, taping a letter to the door, so I blew that off. And I'll just be truthful with you, I got enough money in, on this, I can't afford to send out letters to everybody, that's over four hundred dollars to send a letter out.
I thought it included in the bill, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the bill now, but we're running, you know, it, it, it's time to pick up tomorrow and like she said, people still don't know, you know. Um, but we're, we're gonna pick up a few more. We're not gonna pick up near.
There are a hundred and fifty.
I, I would say we might get fifteen more, maybe, I, I've, I've been all over town. And, uh, like I said, the people that didn't have an, an address number on their house that I could visually see, I skipped them, they've been calling in. Um, I did miss some people out here on Leflin, I missed Terry, him, he, I got him, but the people on down.
Was first.
Of like nine eleven and nine oh seven.
Oh, so like.
They're, 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 I, I, I wasn't sure how far out, you know.
We go all the way out to basically the intersection.
And, and so now they've got totes.
Okay.
But they are included in this four hundred and fifty, so.
Have you had a?
You know, there, there'll be a few, there'll, there'll still be, um, I'd say less than, you know, less than thirty, but may, maybe not, maybe.
Have you dropped off, uh, two totes at a lot of houses?
Um, a few houses.
Okay, cause I feel like there's a lot of houses in town that have at least two totes.
Right.
So maybe that could.
Well, I know my neighbor had four, I think.
Yeah.
Now, I, I don't have anybody that's got, that's got more than two, so, um, but.
Oh, we have one with three, just one, that had three.
Oh, yeah.
She asked.
Have you had a chance to drop the totes off around all the, the city ones and businesses in town?
Well, the businesses could decide, but we've ran into an issue where, as they, uh, Waste Management has taken some of the commercial totes. Yeah.
There's still folks down back here.
Yeah, I know.
City halls still have theirs.
Uh-huh.
Well, cause like, we have, remember we had that list of all the city, there was like ten on there, the cemetery, there was.
They got the cemetery, the cemetery was.
And the businesses down through here, um, like he said, they get to decide, so.
Yeah.
A lot of them's got totes, is Waste Management still gonna come and pick their totes up? I figured it'd be the dumpsters.
So they, from my understanding, I'm not picking up any dumpsters unless somebody calls and says, hey, I don't want the dumpster.
Well.
Is every business.
There was, there was totes back here by the, like, by the bakery and stuff, there's.
I, I see that, yeah.
There was back there, Waste Management never picked that trash up anyway, so they're not gonna pick them totes up. And if you go down a little further, the bank had a regular tote, here one-on-one had a regular tote.
And, and they're gone.
They're gone.
Yeah, cause I, yeah.
They called us.
Yeah, they got, they got.
So were all the businesses on that water list?
Well, there was, there was businesses on that water list, yeah, when I saw it, yeah. Well, and it also included vacant houses, I mean, so it went by meters, so even like the house next door to me that's vacant.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that show, I mean, if nobody's living there, it's not an active meter.
Cause we still need, we did the concession in one of the parks.
Yes.
But how many addresses are just vacant lots that are still showing?
I know another thing, I know, one thing that was.
She only print, it was only active meters, she can switch it on there and only do active ones, yeah.
And there's still.
How many was that?
And there's still five, twenty-five, cause when we did that housing, cause Janet looked that up for me.
It was only four hundred and ninety-five houses.
There was only four hundred and ninety-five houses on that roof project.
Also includes businesses, like GSI, GSI has four meters out there and then you got the apartments.
Apartments, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, and in our defense, this was the very first time we've ever had to deal with it, so, you know, because when we. Went with Advance at the time, Advance bought, you know, they kept buying out companies. So when we, I was on the coun, I just got on the council the first time that we did this, I didn't know we were water customers, we had, we had a bit with Tonya. You know, um, so it was, it was new, now we're doing this, now we kind of know the, you know, the, you know, mistakes. We've kind of learned from it, or we have to do this again in five years.
All learning.
We're all learning, no, no, you're exactly right, now, one thing that was, kind of was brought up was the possible of a rate increase. Um, I know it's already been, been stated, um, I don't want them to have any bad, bad business or anything. But I mean, I think it might be maybe a little bit better to increase it maybe in the, in this third, fourth, and fifth year. Maybe compared to the first and second, um, and then also, you know, we could look at getting some sort of an incentive. Kind of what was done with, uh, Waste Ma, uh, Advance at the time. So we just, like I said, wanted to where they're happy, we're happy, and, and we, we know that, uh, January's gonna be a trial and error.
Well, this, this may not even be feasible, but, and I don't know how this would work for you guys. Maybe it's necessary to let it run a month and see what the final numbers in a month actually are. Once everybody has had two or three pickups of garbage, cause I'm thinking by the end of January, everybody's gonna know. We're gonna know down to the exact number of how many totes everybody's gonna need. And then sign the contract then for, at the end of January, first part of February, so we have like actual.
Debt council meeting, we can do something. What's, I don't.
I don't know how feasible that is.
Take on that, I mean, people's already received bills, we've agreed to go with them, they agreed to service us.
And we're paying attorney fees right now, every, for, that was on the warrant sheets, dealing with the, um, contract.
Contract, yeah.
And we're paying attorney fees right now.
Yeah, we had everything typed up, ready, you know, ready to go, but yeah, we just haven't gotten anything back, but, um.
I think it's just a slower po, process than we all anticipated as far as, um. I mean, even if we had a list of everybody, I think it would still take some time to get everything, cause it's just he and I.
Yeah.
Doled out and sorted out, um, it just takes time. So I, I, I would go a month, I think that's a great idea. Because, uh, I got the greatest influx of feedback and phone calls after Waste Management had picked up the totes. Cause then everybody started.
Panicking.
Oh, I need to call, I need to, you know, I need a recycling tote and, um. So maybe we need a little more time to get people a chance.